Okay, I'd like to call this December 6th, 2017, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board to order. The first order of business is a public hearing on the building infrastructure energy lease options with Siemens. This is a major commitment that the board may be making with Siemens to make renovations and innovations to our building facilities. And Dr. Morris, if you'd like to just kind of give some background on that?
Thank you, Tom. So leasing is an option that exists under law as an alternative to bonding. The advantages of leasing is that the interest rate is lower, the work that's done is guaranteed. In the case of the projects we put forward, there's rebates in terms of energy work, and then there's ongoing savings in terms of the work that would be done. And it literally puts the district at no risk. So those are the high points of going forward with a lease. Initially, the board received a report from Siemens that was approximately $13 million worth of projects, and we knew instantly that that number was too big. And so because of the ongoing discussion around the middle school, we pulled the middle school out of the work instantly. That reduced it to around $7 million, a little bit higher than $7 million. The board still was concerned about that number being rather large, and also the length of time the lease would go. Initial proposal was 7.2 million over 15 years. So the board asked that we look at different options, that we scale back the amount and the length of time. And we have been focusing mostly on the issues of lighting, going to LED lighting, which would save us enormously in our electric bill, because that's our largest cost item in terms of utilities. And windows. So the windows that Moheramit and Masway are due to be replaced, it's a very costly item. The windows at Moheramit in particular, when they originally were installed, are really just household-grade windows, and they need to be replaced as soon as possible in the life cycle. On the Masway windows, there's about three years left. So the reason the board was looking at leasing is because it came with these benefits, and we would glad to answer any questions.
So would somebody like to speak to the Siemens proposals?
I think we should open a public hearing. I think the process as you, as a board, you did. So I'll make a motion to open a public hearing regarding the Siemens proposal.
All in favor, please raise your hand. The hearing's open.
William Hall, Durham. I listened with a great interest at your last meeting about this. The three items that I feel I can comment on is the lighting, the windows, and the plumbing fixtures. And I felt that more people should have their oar in the water over this. First off, the lighting at the moment, as you probably have been informed, I know you have, has very favorable rebates from public service. And it's an improvement. I hope it is, and if there's any question about that, you should have one room done and see what it looks like. The windows are at the end of their life cycle anyways, he said, three more years, probably. The other windows, he said, that are household windows, should have been replaced long ago. The third item is the toilets, or the fixtures, and there's one caveat for the fixtures. At those two schools that you're talking about, you don't get a water bill. You don't get a per cubic foot bill for water and sewer. So that's not a big deal. But if you can fold that into the lights and the windows and still come up with a 14 percent payback per year, great free ride. So 12 to 14 percent is a good business decision. Six or eight percent, hey, then you start balancing it. Anything over 10 percent's a good deal. So it should have been done yesterday. I'm glad that as part of your proposal now, at least those three items, there's absolutely no question about if you're going to get a 14 percent payback. I mean, there's just no question. The only thing is, do one room, if you want, do one room first and see what the lighting looks like. That would be the way I would look at it. But I do hope that you, this is, this part of it is, the way I explained it, if I'm correct, is a no-brainer. Any questions?
Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thanks.
Were there comments in the public hearing? Okay.
There's somebody.
Okay.
It's okay.
See, this isn't public comments, it's just about that.
Well, public comments later.
You were this close.
Yeah. So we're in the public hearing on the Siemens. Would you like to speak to that?
I would. I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. You know, it occurs to me that we could have just done a lease purchase on our field and saved ourselves 20 years' worth of hassle. Why bother to get the voters' approval to spend, you know, $2 million when we can just get Siemens to finance it for us? We didn't do that, because the law seems pretty well set up, that if we want to borrow that sort of money and encumber future boards, we need the voters' approval. Now, there's obviously a lot of magic finance going on in places like Siemens, and I'm in the financial industry myself, and I've seen some of that stuff. And it's great that, you know, they make it so that we can skirt the rules and not have to get those pesky voters to approve, you know, these large capital spending projects. But I mean, I think we could not circumvent the rules, ask the voters for approval. You know, it gets you guys off the hook, you don't have to worry about encumbering the board for the next 10 years, you have the voters' permission. And, you know, it seems the way that the state has set it up, that's the way it was supposed to work. Anyway, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Dean. Other people to speak on the Siemens issue? Okay, do I have to vote to close?
So I move that we close the public hearing.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, the public hearing is closed. The next issue is the approval of the agenda, and I would like to make one modification, a recommendation or modification, and that is that Hannah James' report would be moved up right after the approval of minutes because of some time commitments that she has. So if that would be agreeable, so with that, does somebody else have a change to the agenda? Well, with that change, could I have a vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Don't we have, need to have a motion first?
Okay.
So I will motion to approve the agenda with the change.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Dan. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, there's a student rep in favor. Okay, the agenda's approved with that change. So now we have public comments, so anybody would like to speak? Three minutes? There you go. That's fine.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Ayers, and I am one of the world language teachers at the high school. I'm here as a representative for my department, and we would like to ask the board to consider adding a position at the middle school to continue the expansion and to help our program grow in the next few years. We believe it is important to introduce students to language as early as possible. However, in order to create a sustainable program that fosters student acquisition and retains quality world language teachers, we will need to support our current program and investigate other districts nearby that have successful programs. All of our world language dreams cannot become reality without budgetary support from our board. We believe that it is important to maintain smaller class sizes. As stated on their website, the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Language supports class sizes of no more than 15 students. Smaller class sizes equal more meaningful teacher-to-student interaction, more quality student-to-student interaction, and more direct instruction when necessary for student success. The teachers at the middle school are currently overloaded with student ranges, or student loads ranging from 132 to 148 students. This makes it difficult for teachers to provide individualized instruction, to give timely feedback, and to make meaningful relationships with all of their students. It can also lead to teacher burnout. Similarly, while some students are thriving with world language study in their current classes, we are concerned that other students will not be able to progress as far due to varying levels of need for support and language input. It is a great feat to find quality world language teachers, and by adding another position, we will begin to see greater student language proficiency. In January, Greg Duncan, a nationally recognized world language consultant, has been contracted to visit our district. Mr. Duncan will be visiting our classes and making recommendations for how to improve and eventually expand our program. We believe that it is in the best interest of our district and of our program to wait to make any major decisions regarding expansion to fifth grade until we receive his report. However, we believe that budgeting for another world language teacher now is necessary to strengthen the program as it currently stands with the goal of creating a fifth-grade program in the future. Ideally, we should look for a teacher who is certified in both Spanish and French. We thank you for your consideration in this matter and for all of your support you've given us over the years. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm UC Terrell, sons in second and fourth grade at Moheramit. I can't believe I'm saying that. I'm updating you tonight on the other leg of the world language world that Leslie just shared, with number one, an update on the community after-school program, Mandarin in partnership with the Confucius Institute, a brief update on that partnership, and thirdly, underscoring the communities, at least the Chinese language community support for that fifth-grade teacher to bring down the world language program to fifth grade. First of all, the after-school and before-school elementary language program in Mandarin is going very well this year. We have 55 students enrolled, and about 2/3 is Masway, 1/3 is Moheramit, probably because in the past we've had more in-school programming in partnership with the Masway librarian that's gotten the students engaged in that. The breakdown is 10 fourth graders, 10 third graders, 15 second graders, 13 first graders, and seven ambitious kindergarteners. The retention has been high. We continue at one day a week to anticipate and manage for the inevitable tensions of students that progress faster, that might practice at home with their family, and those that are really just there to hear the tones, to become accustomed to the sounds, and be exposed to the culture. So we're learning to manage that with hands-on experiences and with a series of different levels in our classes that we're getting better at steering families towards. So that program's going very well, with thanks to both principals. The partnership with the Confucius Institute remains strong. We've shown that we can transition from a strong individual lead teacher, Ying Ying Chen, many of you met her, to strong systems for placement and for onboarding. Julie Reese, many of you know, was hired by the Confucius Institute to work with Oyster River teachers, as well as the Confucius Institute teachers, to write Mandarin standards and competencies in the same format as Oyster River had been using, as well as to provide onboarding around teaching American children and to do some extra coaching in the class that complements what the district has offered with a mentor at each of the middle and high schools. So I know the jump to sixth grade was, you know, was something that we discussed at length, is there time to squeeze another piece in the program? And as Leslie's described, the workload on the existing French and Spanish teachers has been high as a result of that expansion. But what we're seeing is that the children, with the Mandarin program, continue to be engaged, that there's interest at the community level in world language for younger students, and we'd also really push for that fifth-grade program. You know, this is the year to do it for continuity's sake. Three years ago, the first graders started, and we proved the concept, right? We showed that there was community interest. A year and a half, two years later, there is the approval of starting in seventh grade as the first graders have gotten older. Now we have eight students who have learned Chinese for three years, and will be entering the middle school next year. And we'd really love to see a program that can accommodate them in this district Confucius Institute partnership. So, you know, so many pluses of expanded world language program, professional capabilities, understanding of diversity and global citizenship, as well as the connection to achievement in other academic subjects. I understand that there are a number of concerns around just how much we can squeeze into a school day, but I would encourage the board, in concert with Liz Leslie, with recommendation, to really kick the tires a bit, explore the feasibility of that fifth-grade position, look what it would mean for the schedule and for the workload of the teachers, and understand more about some of the ramifications in conjunction with the year's budget development. And let's see where we can get. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Gee, a second bite of the apple. I know that you people have been playing with the football idea for some time, and I certainly know that my comments are not necessarily the bottom line, but I did want to tell, I think it's important to share with you what my experience was. I actually played football for Oyster River in the seventh grade. I remember going to Sommersworth and playing, and games that we had here. Then I went to a school in Exeter and played Governor Dummer, Phillips Exeter High, other schools, I don't remember, I just happen to remember those three. I was pretty good, because I came back at halftime with Exeter High. Next thing I know, I looked up and I had five varsity helmets in front of me. We were playing against their JV. Then I went on to work with the Durham Fire Department, and nothing prepared me for that more than my football experience, which, by the way, we had leather helmets. I went on to the Army, I was in the military police, where you've got to go into a bar and you've got to make sure that you come out winning. We, I remember one month, we had three MPs put in the hospital. Another time, before I got there, about 20 MPs were thrown out of a bar. So it wasn't easy, but I will tell you that my successes playing football certainly served me very, very well in that job. And you have people that, from here, that have gone into the service. I don't think that any of the girls here are going to play football, although there are a couple around the state that do. I don't believe that the high school level football is particularly detrimental to your health as compared to hockey. I want to remind you of Travis Roy, who came from Maine, went to BU to play hockey. His father was a coach or something. And as a freshman, he was injured severely in the first quarter minute of his first game at BU. That does happen. That doesn't stop hockey at BU. So I don't, I sure hope I'm not stepping on Mr. Morris's report, but I do want to say that there's another side to this, and I believe that there is plenty of room to play football in high school, and I believe the equipment that they have now is so much better than what we had in 1957, '55, that I think that it's not such a bad deal. Thank you.
Bob Barth Lee, Free Football, I roll. Cut off by the two-minute warning last session, I had wanted to add that similar to Ken Rotner, Maria's and my future welfare were threatened on the ORS- CSD cross-school committee site unless I butted out of the conversation. It's an uncomfortable feeling. It's also a terrible example set for the kids represented. That said, after the vote last session, some of us had a civil discourse out in the hallway. I asked a physician, pro-football mom, why I was the only one talking about tau proteins, the problem, while everyone else only spoke of concussion, not the problem. She replied that there are no scientists on the board, and you, the board, only understand the term concussion. I have heard some on the board say they are not that familiar with the science. Other than Ken, how many of us are fully informed of the role of tau protein production in the brains of youth football participants, that it plays in subsequent development of dementia with or without CTE in later life? Perhaps we should all be better informed. I don't spend much of my time researching and don't claim to be an expert, but what I have learned about the recent research scares the crap out of me with respect to the brains of youth and high schoolers playing football or boxing. I find it hard to believe that any parent or member of the board with full knowledge and understanding of the latest medical science and its conclusions would even consider allowing a child to participate in youth or high school football, and would certainly never vote to facilitate it. I would propose the board sponsor a one- to-two-hour symposium for the public at the high school auditorium, perhaps entitled "Football: The Pros and Cons." Half could be devoted to players, parents, coaches, et cetera, presenting the many positives of participation, and half devoted to presentation by one or two scientists in the field, assuming we might be able to get them, summarizing the recent research and conclusions, including any studies demonstrating the safety of the game, if such exists. Particularly if the question comes to ballot, we owe the public and ourselves objective information on a complex and emotional issue, so that intelligent decisions might be reached. I would be happy to be part of an ad hoc committee charged by the board and chaired by a member of the board to arrange such a meeting. I assume that individuals in favor of football would also be willing to serve. Thank you.
Other public comment? No? Okay, thank you. So we need a motion to approve the November 15th, 2017 minutes, regular minutes. Could I have a motion to approve those? Moved by Brian, second. Second by Michael. Are there changes, corrections? Kenny?
I do. And it pertains to the special announcement that I made before the bulk of the meeting took place. So if you want to go to that, I think that's really on the first page. But basically, some of the information presented in what's written isn't correct, and then there are also some very significant omissions. An example of things not correct is communication. It wasn't communication to me, it was communication to the board. Things that were left out, and specifically, was the physical threats that were made against me, and how that was a very significant part of my wanting to recuse myself, and also my statement that my words had been very falsely represented in both the letters that we received, as well as the threats online in social media, which I verified and other people have verified by going back to the tape. So I have a statement that edits what is there. I don't know if you want me to read that. It's a little bit longer than what we have there, or how you want to proceed.
Is this just a representation of what you said last time, Ken?
Yes, and it also, though misrepresented, but also left out very significant content of what I said.
Well, if it's an indication, if it's a representation of exactly what you said, just give it to Laura and we'll put it in the minutes.
I believe it is. I don't know if the board, though, feels the need to approve that or not, because this is, again, I spoke at that last meeting, and my words were, I believe, misconstrued, so.
If it's a verbatim transcript of what you said.
Yeah, if it's verbatim of what you said before, Ken.
It's not verbatim, because the words, verbatim would be the whole transcript. This is kind of going off of Laura's summary of what I said, and editing that to include things that she left out and things that I think she got wrong.
I'm wondering whether it might be good just to defer approval of the minutes, and then you could provide her with that, and we could approve these minutes at another meeting?
We can put the verbatim statement you made, Ken, into the minutes. You made them. So rather than have Laura summarize them, we can just pick it up, exactly what you said, and put those in the minutes.
Whatever the board wants, but I don't want it to stand with what is there. I think that is really, did not capture what my point was. And I really do want to address, I recused myself because of physical threats, and I did not see the discussion going anywhere. I think that's very important to highlight.
So last week, last meeting, when you refused yourself and gave your statement, did Laura have the actual statement to work from, or was she summarized?
I talked ad lib, I didn't have a statement.
You did not have a statement at the time?
I just talked ad lib.
All right.
So the change would be to create a verbatim statement, you know?
Which we actually can take right off the videotape. I mean, that would be the way to do it.
If you want that, or if you want the short synopsis that I have here, whichever you would prefer.
I think that it should be verbatim, what you said, Ken. I don't think it should be summarized, largely because the summary's not going to capture your, you know, your presentation. So I think what the board should do, because this is exactly what happened, is just direct Laura and Wendy to take your statement word by word and put it into the minutes. So I would defer approval of the minutes until that happens.
Okay.
That way, it's accurate.
In some ways, if you take an oral statement, you might have to, you know, word for word, sometimes transcript of an oral statement sometimes has, you know, you might have to kind of shape this as a statement, so.
Whatever. I'll get it, I'll get it done, Ken, and then we'll just make sure that, you know, when we come to approval of the minutes next time, it accurately, you know, I don't want it to be, at this point, it would be, I think, not advantageous to the community present for you to give a summary. I think it should be what you said. That way, there's no question, and it's taken right off the tape, and it's as accurate as it can be.
That's fine. And I follow the board's direction and your direction, Dr. Morris. Thank you.
Yep, my pleasure. There's also, Denise?
Go ahead, that's okay.
There's also, you know, in terms of public comment, our past practice has been to summarize in about three or four sentences what each person does. In this case, I think Dr. Barth asked that his full statement be put in the record, which is something we haven't done in the past, and I think, I don't know how people feel about that, because I think in some ways, it creates a, you know, the full written comment, everybody else has three or four sentences, and then the full comment.
I'd be glad to withdraw that, if it makes it easier to edit.
Well, I just wanted...
My feeling on it, and again, drawing from town council experience, the detail of the minutes is very, very helpful, because there are issues that come back, and just this recent issue with me. And I think to have very, to have detailed minutes is important, and I think if someone takes the time to have an electronic statement, and they want their words recorded for public record, I think that they deserve that, and I think it's very important moving forward to have a very accurate record.
I think that's different than what the intended minutes are, Ken, because you would literally have to have a court-type recorder here. Neither Laura or Wendy have the capacity to take word for word.
I don't, I don't think, of course, not word for word, but having minutes with the appropriate detail is important, and if people feel that they have a statement that they want formally recorded in the minutes, I think they deserve that.
We also have videos, though, right? We also have videos that show exactly what someone had said, which is an official reporting of our school board meetings. So why would we want to tie up the minutes with that, when you can always refer back to the video? I always go back to the video, and there's an issue that I want to learn more about, or remember what was said, you know, what was that, so I go back to the video, or do the minutes, because the minutes is a summation, where the video has everyone's entire statement in there. If we're going to start putting everyone's statement in there, our minutes are going to be 25 pages long, because everyone's going to come in and say, I want my statement put into the minutes. It's already on the video. Doesn't that usually suffice?
Denise?
And I also think that in this particular situation, the other people weren't offered that opportunity, so I feel like if that's what we want to do, you know, and I can see it either way, but I think if that's what we want to do, then that should be something that is stated as part of our policy, and that it shouldn't just be for this one person and this one issue. So I also have an issue with it here. So I also have an issue with it here, again, simply because I feel like in terms of the fairness of it or whatever, that if that's what we as a board want to do, then it should be right out there that, you know, if this is what you want, you submit a written statement. Otherwise, I don't really feel that it's, I guess, fair in a way because we haven't offered that to other people. So I don't know. That's just my feeling about it.
So what's the sense? I mean, you have two options. We could say this sets a precedent that we're going to use for other people, or we could say we want to maintain the practice of basically summarizing in three or four sentences what every person does.
I'd prefer to stick with the current practice because in many cases, based on the numbers of people that are interested in speaking at public comment, there is a time limit that we ask people to adhere to. I think the minutes should reflect what's said within the confines of that time limit. And, you know, I'm not sure the minutes are the best platform for people's, you know, pre-prepared statements that may exceed that time limit. I think it should really just reflect the conversation of the meeting.
Okay. Some other people have opinions on this? I'm wondering if we should have a motion, whether we should continue our current, I mean, we're kind of at a dilemma here, whether we should have a motion, whether we should continue the current practice to summarize...
I guess I would, I agree with Brian that we have the video for essentially every meeting, and any correspondence is also part of the public record from a discoverability perspective. So I also lean towards the more minimal essential record of who's here, when things happened, and what the motions were and what the actions taken were.
I mean, my feeling, you're right, the public record is going to a tape. The tapes are kind of cumbersome to get through. They're not even subdivided by agenda, so you've got to try to find where you're going. And then I had the luxury tonight, because I'm here, of saying that what was summarized of what I said, I didn't think represented it, but that would behoove somebody who spoke two weeks ago to look at the minutes, decide the minutes didn't reflect what they thought they said, come back to our meeting and speak at public comment and say that the minutes didn't reflect it. So my feeling is if someone submits something, we have a formal documentation, and I think minutes are the formal documentation, not a videotape that records that. I think that's a fairness and an accuracy that we owe our public.
So I'm wondering whether we should have a vote, because I mean, it sounds like there's a disagreement. There's, if we could have a motion, should we continue the current practice of having the, you know, having each speaker's comments summarized, you know, in three or four sentences? Do you have, you know, just a sense of how we stand on that? Otherwise, we're going to be going back and forth forever.
But no, of course have the summary, but I, what I was saying, if someone has taken the time and has an electronic statement they want to send to us, that I feel that that, in addition to the summary, should be part of the record.
That's the question. That's the question. So there's disagreement on that.
Right.
So if we could just have a vote, you know, if you can decide it, you know, my sense is that the majority is for maintaining the current practice. Okay? So do you want to put it to a vote or...
No, I think you're right. I'll again be one out of seven, so I won't even move it forward.
Okay. So I think going forward, if you, you know, because we're not going to approve the minutes tonight, if Dr. Barth's statement could be summarized as other statements, and then I think there are other venues certainly for having a full, you know, a letter like that published, including a letter to the board, you know, which is a public document as well. So, okay?
Well, the only thing I would say is that when we do that, just tell people that if you have a long letter, just send it to the entire board and there comes public record.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So we're deferring the approval of these minutes to the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Student Center report.
Oh, non-public.
Oh, non-public.
And I actually...
Okay. Non-public, I'm sorry. You have the non-public meetings.
So I will make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of November 15, non-public meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, second vote. Dan?
And then I have a correction. It says that, wait, it's not there. Uh-oh. There's somewhere in here, I thought it was here, that I was listed as, oh, yeah, it is, at the very top. It says that I both moved to enter non-public session and also second, I was the person that seconded, and I didn't do both things. So I think I was the person who seconded the motion. Somebody else made the motion. I don't know if it was...
I think it was, Kenny usually do.
No, I didn't.
No?
I may have seconded, but...
Maybe it's, I didn't know.
Why don't we defer that one to next time?
Okay, so we can check that?
Go back to the videotape.
Okay.
And we go back and see who...
No videotape.
I know I did one, but I obviously didn't do them both.
I think that we need to defer because I may have to go under hypnosis so that we, so I can have a mental comeback of what happened.
So are you going to defer on that or...
Because we don't remember who it was that made the motion, so we'll have to go back to the tape to see, I guess.
Well, go in. That was a public motion, so it's on video.
Yes, it'll be on video.
Check the video.
Okay, check the video.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so that one will be deferred as well?
The regular minutes do contain the entry to non-public, and they say that Dan seconded Denise's motion.
Did you see it above it?
Oh, okay. Then you made the motion and Dan seconded. Okay, then the non-public should reflect that one, that's right.
Okay.
Then we can move on them.
So would that change...
Yes.
Okay.
I think we can go ahead and approve those.
So, I'm sorry, did you move to...
I did.
Was there a second? Second, okay. So with that change, we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor approving the non-public minutes? Seven in favor, those are approved. Okay, now, Hannah Jay.
Thank you for letting me move it up. So first of all, the, all four grades are working together, all our governments are working together to make a snowball semi-formal, which will take place on the Friday of midterms week. So it'll be in the multipurpose room. We're working to get the plans together to have a great, a dance for all the grades, and there will be a semi-formal, which I know a lot of underclassmen are excited about because they don't go to prom, so they're always looking for a reason to dress up. The junior class is having candy cane grams right now, which I believe you guys have probably heard of through years past, but they, you can send a candy cane gram to anyone in any advisory and with a little message on it, and a candy cane is delivered right before holiday break, which is fun and a good fundraiser for the junior class. A few days ago, we had a visiting author, Kate Messner, who is the author of the children's book, a scholastic children's book called The Ranger in Time. And even though she is a children's book author, she was a really influential speaker. She was, she captivated the audience really well, and I got to go and see her in my writing class, and she was really great. She offered a lot of good research tips for our, to help kids who are doing the National History Day projects, which is something that's coming up. It's a nationwide contest for history research, and so she was really helpful with that. She actually had a writing workshop that was available before she spoke to the students, and I unfortunately was not able to make it, but I heard from some of my classmates who went that she was really awesome to get tips from about their writing. And then for Granite State Challenge, we made the top 14 schools to play in it, which is awesome. It's an academic challenge that, have you guys heard of it before? Yeah. So that's really awesome for us. Then the winter sports have been starting. So the hockey team went to Martha's Vineyard this weekend for kind of a tournament, which is really the only thing that's been starting up the seasons. And then also, we have Scott McGrath, who won Coach of the Year this year, which is really awesome. I've heard he's an amazing coach, and clearly a lot of other people think he is too. So congratulations to him.
So Hannah, will you keep us posted on the dates of the Granite State Challenge?
Yes, yeah, I'll...
It's all televised, right?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
Do we know the team?
I could name like four people on it maybe, but I don't want to...
Just keep us posted on it because that's pretty exciting.
Yes, I will.
What sport does Scott coach?
He's the cross-country coach, and I think he does indoor track and outdoor track as well.
Great, thank you very much. And you've work to do.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. From the board? Brian?
Today, I was lucky enough to see the third and fourth grade chorus over at the Masteway School putting on their performance, so, because I was going to be here, so I couldn't see it tonight, so I went and saw it this afternoon. My son wasn't too happy about that. He wanted me to go to both. But it was Pam Felder, Felber, as usual, did a great job, and she integrated dance and art into it as well, which I've never seen before in all the years my kids have been through the Mastway. So it was just a great, great coming together of the teachers of different fields, putting it together for the kids and seeing how they, the kids really enjoyed it too, and even the kids watching it were enthralled. And if, you know, kids younger than third grade, it's like herding cats. So they did a pretty good job of that. So on a tip of the cap to Pam Felder and her staff for what she put on today. I think it was great.
Thanks. Others?
Just maybe to try to clarify an issue that's been in the press, and we've received some letters about it, and it concerns UNH putting forward a proposal to charge parents of children who are going to the Oyster River Community School District, the costs that has been levied against those families. These are typically graduate students, although I think there are also some faculty living in Forest Park. And maybe the clarification would be being involved with negotiations with UNH in a lot of shared systems, water and sewer, which are easy to quantify, police, roads that are not easy to quantify. But the students who live in Forest Park and come to the Oyster River School District, UNH does not pay tax to the town of Durham, but the children who live in Forest Park and were coming to our school district were being counted as Durham residents in the funding formula that is used to divvy up how our schools are funded. And in negotiations with UNH, and I believe these concluded maybe about a year and a half, two years ago, approved by UNH, approved by our town council, basically, all we did is we ran the numbers on what Durham's responsibility would be to the school based on numbers, including the Forest Park kids, and numbers without the Forest Park kids, and came up with a number on what that was costing the town and allocated that cost to UNH. That money came right to the schools as far as Durham's payment. Durham did not keep any of that money, did not pocket that money. What it meant was that the residents of Durham were not subsidizing the Forest Park kids coming to our school district. Basically, they live in nontaxable property and live on UNH's campus, and this was the way of having that be funded without the town picking up the cost of that. So it's, and the school board does get that money. Durham gets zero of that. It passes through us to the schools. So I just want to clarify that.
And my understanding is the university's backed off that to some degree.
I think they made a statement saying that they are talking to the town, but from my knowledge, there's not been talking to the town at this point. It would mean reopening a, an agreement that was signed just over a year ago that UNH was in agreement with.
I believe I read in the union leader this morning that UNH is going to pay that.
Are they?
Or they're going to work with them to do it, but...
I saw they were going to work with the town, but we've not been approached yet.
Yeah. That's what the union leader said, so I just, that's my source.
Okay. Denise?
Just to continue with that, from the school perspective, my concern would be that obviously those families could never afford that tuition, and if, in fact, it came down the pike, whether this year, next year, or whenever, we would simply lose those students. It would affect our enrollment and what we receive for funding. So it's just something to keep in mind, and I just hope that it can be resolved because I think there's just no way that these are students themselves or, you know, graduate students or whatever. And the other issue that I just wanted to mention...
Can I ask you about that?
Oh, sure.
So I think, I agree with you completely, and we received a letter about how this really increases the diversity in our schools, which is so important. And I don't know if there's a way to figure out that Durham doesn't bear that full responsibility and whether that becomes a school district issue and not a Durham issue. Because I think that's the problem now is it's, Durham is doing that. I'd be very open to seeing if we could approach that as a school district.
The second thing I just wanted to mention is, and I believe it was actually mentioned at our last meeting about the coding camp that is coming to Moheram and Mastway, and I saw an article in the paper about it, and it sounds really exciting. So I just, I'm always very impressed with the, sort of the variety of opportunities that are offered to our students and ways to kind of partner with, you know, with whatever it is, you know, organizations or different businesses or what have you in the community to enrich the education of our students. So I just thought that was pretty neat.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Well, I mean, I think what Jim is saying, there's a concern about the accuracy about what, how the money is done. I don't actually have the answer to that, but I, before I even address that, I do sit on economic, my other hat is economic development with the town of Durham. And I think that this story is kind of a shock value story. There's, what I said at the town council on Monday, there's been a real thought process in the developing of downtown to kind of diversify the housing stock, moving away from just regular undergraduate students. And so it's very difficult in terms of zoning to do that. Excuse me. And so really, the only tool we've had is workforce housing or over 55 housing is the only way of being able to do it. But these students actually represent very valuable housing stock to us as a town. We really would like to welcome them into the community in a taxable property because it helps us stabilize some of the neighborhoods that they can move into. So I think, aside from what's been in the union leader and everything else, there is clearly, I think, a pathway forward that is beneficial to the students and beneficial to the town of Durham.
Okay. Should I?
I just wanted to add that the union leader, the initial article, really led the public astray because it implied that Oyster River as a school system was a participant in that agreement. And not only are we not a participant, we don't sit at the table to negotiate that agreement. The only correction I would make, respectfully, in terms of what Kenny said, was that money is not passed through. That money is collected by Durham. They use it in their, their share of the school to, you know, offset their contribution, but it's not in addition to.
I didn't mean to imply that.
I just wanted to make sure that we were clear. Because one of the things I've been dealing with in my communications is being crystal clear to the public that we do not sit at the table, we're not invited at the table. It has nothing to do with the school system. It is truly a town-UNH agreement, and we're not a signatory nor negotiating partner in it.
And I agree. I was just saying, it's a wash for Durham.
Right.
Because the money really passes through us and it's...
I'm not sure that actually mathematically makes sense, though, because of the appropriation formula between the towns, that it's not just a straight, what is the, we figure that from a school perspective based on the cost of education. That's not the way the proportion works.
I'm sorry, I'm going to stop here because this is not, this is, we're turning this into a discussion item right now. Okay? And I think if we want to talk about this as a discussion item, we should put it as a discussion item later on. I think the point of this is to have individual comments and not to get into a discussion. I think that's how this was set up, so. So I'd be happy to put it on as a discussion item later on, maybe get more information about it, but... about it, but that's not kind of what, I see this is, this is a part, you know, the function of this, part of the meeting. So? Sorry, other comments?
Got nothing.
Okay, so now move to-
I didn't think your map is wrong, Kenny.
Move to the assistant superintendent.
Thank you. Before I introduce the PE teachers here at the high school to do a presentation on the PE curriculum, I did want to make one brief announcement. We gotta, we, you're familiar with the fact that we, as a school district, have been looking for ways to expand early college opportunities for our students over the last few years. And I think Jim announced at a meeting in the last month that we had just arrived in agreement with UNH to provide an early college opportunity for Oyster River High School students. It allows them to do one course for free in a semester, and then pay $800 for additional courses for all 11th and 12th graders that qualify through that program. We've also historically had Project Running Star, which is a dual-credit program offered through the community college system, where kids have been able to take courses in-house that count for college credit. We've also had students taking courses at the community colleges, taking advantage of that. In addition to students taking courses through the UNH CATS program, which is also another program that gives high school kids the opportunity to take courses. The Department of Ed on Friday announced an additional opportunity in the field of STEM, which we are now beginning to explore. This is one of the advantages to having an ELO coordinator. Sean Peschel is immediately on top of this. Basically, the way that works is the state legislature passed a bill basically saying that all kids in the state of New Hampshire in 11th and 12th grade will have free tuition for any STEM dual-credit courses that you can provide in-house, or taking courses at the community college. So it's a really exciting opportunity. So immediately, we did this year just start with some robotics and some STEM-related courses here at the high school, and then we're beginning to take a look at, can we convert those into early college opportunities for our kids? Very exciting opportunity. I'll tell you more about it as time goes on, but it's, the opportunities for our kids to get college credit are growing, and it's a very exciting thing. So, any questions about that?
Sounds good.
Great. So, without further ado, I want to just introduce the, our high school physical education department. As you know, last year we made a policy change that affected the credit offerings within the physical education department, which motivated a look at our PE program. I can't say enough good things about the great work that John, Dawn, and Victoria have been engaging in, and they're here tonight to give you an update on where they are at with that work. It's really exciting stuff. So I would like to call Dawn Mader, John Moran, and Victoria Ficker up to the mic and take it from here.
Hey everybody, thanks for having us. I'm Dawn, this is Victoria, this is John, and we know you've got an awful lot to do tonight, so we promise we won't talk too too long. I would like to mention just one thing real quick. Oyster River actually won the Granite State Challenge quite a few years ago. I only know that because there's a banner hanging in the gym. So, we actually did win that. So, anyway, so we, I know we're here to talk about curriculum updates, but we'd like to really briefly talk a little bit more about all the other things that we have been involved with in our program in the last year. Be it completing competencies and putting them in place, the way we now do grading on Power School, which has been completely revamped for us. And with Sue Johnson's help, we now have the latest in website design. So our website, which you can now get to off the link from the district site, is much more user-friendly with a lot of, you know, important information on it. So besides curriculum stuff, those are the other things that we've been working on. So we've been pretty busy. I like to think that tonight's the last night you're gonna hear the term "physical education." We met back in September to talk about what direction we were going. When we met, we met off-site with our complete department, which includes Rob Quagliari of Health, in Health, and Nick Rachardi, who teaches wellness courses here at the high school, who's now a member of our department. He teaches classes such as nutrition and wellness, fuel and fitness, Intro to Culinary, Big Shop, and a class called Adulting. And if you guys ever get a chance to check those out, he's doing a fantastic job. But they're all members of our department now. And in this meeting, before we started talking about curriculum, we started talking about rebranding. And the fact that, I know for myself, I've been involved in physical education for just a few years now. And no matter how hard we try, people still refer to it as gym, they still think of us as wearing whistles around our necks. And here in a few minutes, when John starts talking to you about social-emotional learning and CASL standards, 21st century learning, I think you're gonna realize that what used to be known as physical education isn't what many people now, you know, or still think of it as. So, having said that, we feel that going forward, our department should be known as Exercise Physiology and Wellness. It encompasses all that we do. I think it kind of, again, it rebrands us, and I think it'll get people's attention as far as all that's happening in our area. And I think that's really important. As far as curriculum changes, we now have our freshmen all year long. They are being introduced, have the opportunity to be involved in over 40, or almost 40, activities during the course of the year. Again, we see them every day, and they have a chance to be physically active every day. Along those lines, we've also started having our freshmen do what we call personal health assessments. And they actually are getting information based on their own individual scores in regards to things like cardiovascular endurance, agility, and overall strength. And we've been really careful that this information is made available to them, and they now have the opportunity to see the benefits of getting exercise every day, because we're gonna, you know, do these same assessments in June, and the hope is, they're gonna see the gains that they've made. And we're pretty excited about that, and the fact that this is information for them. You know, we do as much as we can to just avoid even, you know, knowing what their scores are, just because, again, it's their information. Victoria's gonna talk to you about the electives that we have started offering this year for the first time. And then John's gonna follow up, like I said, and talk to you a little bit about CASL standards, and 21st century learning, competencies, and also our adventure education program that we're really excited about. All right? So, thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right, so as Dawn was saying, electives are new this year. They are an aspect of our curriculum that after a student takes their full year of freshman PE, they can sign up out of choice to take another elective class. We are trying to expand this program and create offerings that are broad, so that all students are interested, and so far, they've been extremely successful. I believe almost every one of our classes have been full in enrollment. So some of these were team sports, indoor and outdoor sports, striking and fielding, coaching and officiating, unified partners, personal fitness, where students participate in new fitness, such as creating their own personal workout plans, Tabata, Pilates, yoga. And hopefully in the future, we add even more, such as yoga and mindfulness, based on stress relief or reduction. We're also hopefully incorporating adventure programming, Adventure 1 and Adventure 2. So, so far, so good. Hopefully it continues, so.
Super.
Super.
I don't really know I have as much to say about those things as Dawn tells me. You really built you up, so it's good. In the year of the effective communicator, that's what we're in this year, that's one of our 21st century learning expectations. And we put the effort forth to put that table that you have in front of you, or you should have at someplace within your notes, that shows some comparisons between our competencies in physical education, or exercise physiology and wellness, and how well they blend with the 21st century learning expectations, and how well they blend with the CASL standards. And along with that, we put Project Adventure last, because we wanted you to read through that and see that Project Adventure is an integral part of any physical experience that we can provide for students. One of the most important things about what we do is, in our environment, students feel things. It's a physical experience, and we can't remove that from the learning that we provide in our program. Even, you know, when we're talking about fitness-related focus, to feel what it feels like to have your muscles sense fatigue, to feel what it feels like to be winded, to be out of breath, and then to learn how you can improve upon that. Those are such important experiences for students, and we provide that throughout our program. And then the Project Adventure piece is something that we don't have. But it's such an outstanding opportunity for students to collaborate with each other. It's a cycle of learning, and it's a physical experience along the way. There are so many different ways that we can offer that, but that's something that we don't have here. So we're really excited about the opportunity to add adventure to what we can provide students. We've wanted to do it for a really long time, and this is very exciting for us. It's a great experience for students, and we really look forward to having the opportunity to provide that. So thank you very much. If there are any questions whatsoever, please fire away. Would be more than happy to answer any questions at another time as well. Thank you so much. Yes?
I just have a comment, actually, because I think it's really great, the rebranding. Because I keep thinking of like, when I was a kid, and it was dodgeball that you were doing it, like gym. But as I, as I read through all, I mean, I think it's, it's really, you know, as we've moved to more of an information technology society, and every kid has a phone and that, it's more important than ever that when they come into the high school, that they do have physical activity, and they, they learn some skills that they carry on in their future. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much. Denise?
Yeah, I would say the same thing. I just want to commend you for all the work you've done. I know it was, it was really a lot to kind of throw that, oh, we're gonna change this whole, you know, in terms of the PE requirements, which are now, I love the idea of the rebranding. I think that's wonderful, and I just really want to commend you for all the work you've done. And it's so exciting that, you know, the programs are growing, and students get to really be active participants in the specific areas that really kind of call to them, or whatever. So that's, I think it's wonderful.
Thank you.
It just seems to me like you've risen to the challenge. I think we, you know, when we changed the requirement, that created a challenge for you folks, and you, by creating these electives, and they're full, I think you've just risen to, risen to the challenge, and I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
As far as the, you know, emotional side of it, I guess, because a lot of times the emotional side can go into the physical side. Is there a lot of teaching as far as, you know, how that affects your body, and how to deal with it when it happens? Is that kind of your forte, or is that-
I think it blends into a lot of the things that we have to offer, but one of the benefits of the adventure piece, too, is it's a challenge-by-choice atmosphere. So, you know, in adventure education, they talk about a certain level of anxiety that's healthy. And then when you, when you have a challenge-by-choice atmosphere, where, you know, when you're ready to give that a whirl, you can give it a shot, but you're not gonna be judged if you're not ready to do it. So it gives, you know, the kids an opportunity to find their place. It's a cyclical learning atmosphere as well, so they're gonna, whether the problem is this today, this is what we're focusing on, so together as a group, they experience that, they process that, they strategize on how they're gonna do it the next time, what they did, what they could have done differently, what's my role, what could my role be if I do it the next time? And then they try it again. It might be a little bit different, but they try it again. And they might try a different role the next time, so if they were a little anxious about it the first time, they might find the second time to, okay, I'm gonna try this a little bit differently this time. So it's an opportunity for growth, because it repeats itself. And that's the, the point of, the pattern of inquiry that, I don't know if you guys read through that lesson plan that I provided, or that we provided, but it's a, it's a pattern of learning. So if it didn't work well the first time, they're gonna have another experience. They can visit that again and try it differently. So I think that touches upon that a little bit.
Get them out of their comfort zone type thing?
Sorry?
Get them out of their comfort zone type thing?
It's absolutely out of the comfort zone atmosphere, and you know, and it's at the timeframe that they choose.
Any questions? Well, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, guys.
You guys are welcome to stop by anytime you want. Just drop in. Just swat.
Only if you have dodgeball.
Superintendent Sirford?
Okay, just, I'll go through them quickly. I got an inquiry on where we stand in terms of the diversity work. And since the last time I presented, we actually have a lot of partners who've stepped forward. UNH with Jamie Nolan in the Office of Multicultural Affairs, New Hampshire Listens with Michelle Holt Shannon, Burroughs Academy with Michael Bernanesco. And then the Community Read, Waking Up White, that's being led by Kristin Facilius. And of course, we continue to do our work with Andrew Smith. And I continue to try to have meetings with my advisory committee, but getting that number of people together becomes somewhat of an obstacle. Specifically, what's going on between January and May, and as these solidify with dates, I certainly will get them to you. One of, one of the outreaches that Todd and I did was with Michael at Burroughs Academy. They have, obviously it's a private high school, but they have a multicultural coordinator in Michael. And he offers a course to his staff that gets credit through Leslie College. And Todd and I are in conversations with him about providing that opportunity to our own staff. In the New Hampshire Listens piece, which is a subset of the Community Read, they're willing to put in after-school meetings with our staff around diversity. And Andrew Smith's work would continue in terms, in terms of how we talk about race. My idea there is that we would do them at the building level, and hopefully engage our PTOs. And then, of course, as the itinerary develops, Waking Up White, it's pretty amazing, there's dozens of things that are gonna happen in our communities from January through April, with the culminating activity being on April 16th here at our high school auditorium with Debbie Irvin, the author, presenting. And then we continue to do work on the policy addendum that was approved by the board. I did have a draft, I've shared it with a few people, and we're continuing to work on that. So there's a lot of work planned around diversity between January and May of the upcoming second half of our school year. Questions? Denise?
Just in terms of the book, and how, so how do people get involved in that? Like, if they want to be part of that, how are they gonna be getting involved in that?
With the Waking Up White?
With the Waking Up White, and the-
So Kristin is putting the final touches on a brochure that will be shared with the entire community. And that includes Lee and Madbury participation. She's encouraging participation across all three towns. And so that specific information is coming out.
Okay.
She was actually just finishing, I think, it yesterday, in terms of getting it to the printer. Other questions?
Actually, I saw today, because Kristin comes to the Celebrate Durham group, which meets Wednesdays, and it was actually, there was so much stuff on the piece of paper that they were like, do we go to legal size? So it's, there's a lot of things.
The exciting part of all of these partners is it breaks through the barrier of this is a school issue. You know, this is a community's issue. This is about all of us, not about what happens in school. It's about how we deal with each other respectfully, regardless of our religions, colors, or sexuality. It's just, it's really sparked a lot of interest across the communities. I'm pretty excited by how this has expanded into a host of other partners outside the school.
Just wanted to say, I think, I attended Andrew Smith's session last Friday, and I thought he was fantastic. I just thought, you know, such an interesting, welcoming presentation, and got us involved in a really interesting way. And I think how he did it echoed what he was saying. It was a real, you know, nice balance there.
And just so the board knows, I know that Michael's attended, now I know Tom has attended. We have three Fridays left, including this Friday, so if you really want to have an excellent experience, and Michael and Tom now have both alluded to how good it is, our staff is also pretty, giving him very high marks across the board. And the one thing that we have done, you know, sometimes you do things right, and Todd and I decided we were gonna evaluate each session as they were done, instead of waiting until 400 people were done. And we have been getting consistent feedback from the staff. This was wonderful, this is terrific. What's the next step? We really need, you know, practical knowledge. And that's what, when you look down through this list of work that is about to happen, it is about practice, and that's pretty exciting.
So what time is it at? Is it nine?
Nine, nine on Friday. Yeah, and it's at the Durham Council Chambers, which-
You don't have to get there?
You and Kenny can probably get there with your eyes closed.
Are the following two also morning, the two other Fridays after?
Yes. Yep, we kept them the same, because actually the town of Durham was gracious enough to give this, this room. And it's been a fantastic opportunity for us, so. give this room, and it's been a fantastic opportunity for us, so...
Is it possible to film one of the remaining ones? I would love to see it.
I would have to ask.
Because I would love to see it, and not available in the morning.
Todd, when you see Andrew on Friday, would you ask him if that's possible? I mean, filming it won't give you the same experience as being there. It'll just be a record of, you know, his presentation. And the other thing, Todd, is ask if we can have a copy of his PowerPoint. Okay? Thank you.
Is the staff meeting in January at the in-service day towards the end of the month? Is that the, or is that work day? When is the staff meeting in January with Andrew that you cite here?
This will be in addition to the normal staff meetings that we have, so this will be an after-school piece.
With everybody coming together in one place?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So we think in the next round of this, Michael, it's better to get it more familiar ground so that staff can ask questions, and it'd be more interactive by building. Okay, so that didn't go as fast as I hoped, so I'll keep on going. Football, research. One of the things that the board asked is, could we collect information? So we have collected information. We collected all the information that you asked of us. We wanted to get it to you as soon as possible. So first and foremost, you have received copies from both the Dover Superintendent and the Portsmouth Superintendent expressing their interest. You have the NHIAA guidelines, which clearly no longer state that you have to have your own team. Don't tell me it's not in your packets. Is it not in your packets?
It was in the backup, though, that we were sent.
It is in the backup?
Yeah, it was in the backup.
Thank you, Kenny. I was going to say, it was so important to get to you before tonight. So the guidelines are in your packet. They no longer dictate that you have to have your own team. You have two lawyer letters. One is dealing with liability, and that's from your school's attorney, and she's saying that the liability to the district, the cooperative, is relatively low. Lawyers will never say it's zero, because the liability is assumed by the host school system. And there was another letter related to warrants. And so this is what kind of drove me to give you this information tonight. Having heard Al's comment at the last meeting about possibly the board not making a decision at this level, but pushing it to a warrant, I really wanted to get you the timelines for warrants. So a citizen's warrant has to be done by January 9th. I don't have it right in front of me. And it makes no difference whether it has money or not. If you're going to do it, you have two deadlines. If it has money, it has to be done by the 9th. If it doesn't have money, it has to be done by the 26th. So I'm pulling those from memory. I think they're fairly accurate, but if I'm wrong, please correct me. What's the importance of that? Originally, we had thought that we would have the more in-depth conversation about football in January, but if you have it in January, you've left yourselves or the community no time to put together an additional warrant. So by giving you the information tonight, I'm hoping that we can have the discussion on football on the 20th, our next meeting, in terms of what direction the board wants to go. So tonight was barely to fill all of the requests that you have made of us related to data, so you now have that.
Was there something on cost?
On cost, yes.
I thought one of the questions was...
Yep, we are. And that's, and so concurrently, so beyond this, Andy has been meeting with both schools, going through the list of questions related specifically to the conditions of an agreement. So this was really the background foundational document that you needed, and then Andy has been doing that work. And so we'll be prepared to give you that information on the 20th. So we've kind of pushed this up, because I didn't think it was fair to wait until January.
That's good.
And so that would be what I would ask. We put it on the agenda for the 20th.
How does Title IX fit into...
That's all the work Andy's doing.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll have the answers to costs, to the relationship, to Title IX, all on the 20th.
Thank you.
Okay. I already gave you the update on the addendum for racism, and then we had a communication from the state that they did not want to put crosswalks at Massway. I was really thrilled that the town of Lee reached out to myself and to Carrie and said, "What do you think about that?", and we were both aghast. I mean, this is Route 155, folks. These cars going, you know, 40 miles an hour, and are they slowing down for the school? Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. So not having a crosswalk made no sense to us. So actually, Brian was at the meeting where I talked about this, and with Madbury, the crosswalk is a shared cost, so I suggested to the selectmen, if the state is not willing to spend $250, that's the cost for them to put down a crosswalk, then the school system and the town of Lee can share the cost, and we'll maintain it ourselves. And then Carrie came up with the brilliant idea of actually having a crosswalk at both ends of the bus loop. We now only have one, so if we're going to do it ourselves, mine is do it right. It just seemed very inane that the state was looking to save 250 bucks on a crosswalk in front of a school, but they had their logic, and we just disagreed with it. So that was a presentation at Lee. That's it, Tom.
Okay. Business administrator, Sue? Or is that going to be later to the... Yeah, okay. So we've had the Student Senate, so update on competencies, Jay?
Good evening, everyone. Jay Rashad, principal of the middle school, provided to you some just general backup that I hope you had the opportunity to look over. As promised, I just wanted to give you an update, kind of where we're at the timeline, some of the work that's been going on at the middle school, meeting with parents, giving staff PD. The first progress report was in November. We've got nothing but positive feedback in general. Please keep in mind, some staff are doing this for the first time, so it's kind of like learning how to ride a bike for the first time. So we've had many lessons in terms of how we can get better, particularly with our Power School and reporting. So that's something I look forward to working closely with IT. The biggest concern I've heard from parents, I've had some general forums where parents have come in and met with me, I just had a meeting with several parents yesterday, is that when our students aren't meeting our high standards, for example, if they're just progressing or beginning, or there's insufficient evidence, parents want to know detail in the comments section of why that is. So that's something we're working on internally as well. Any questions about where we're at with the timeline? The next forum is just a general statement, an example of what I sent out in the weekly updates, is a couple of videos that we've provided to parents. One in particular is in terms of how to navigate Power School to see how your child's doing. So again, I've gotten very little feedback. Parents that I have, that have reached out to me, said it's been informative and helpful. An important piece is the parent survey. As promised, last spring, I said, you know, any kind of survey questions that I would be providing to parents, or students, or even staff, I would run by all of you to look at, if you wanted to make any changes, or... So again, there's, what, five questions that I was planning on survey parents? Any questions about that, or any feedback, or anything you'd like me to add before I send that to parents? Okay. Wow, you're an easy crowd tonight.
Still a lot of work on this agenda.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate the time. And again, if something comes up, if any parent reaches out to you in terms of things that, you know, you feel, or they feel we should be asking, I mean, just please reach out to me, let Dr. Morse know. I mean, I want to get as much feedback from parents as possible. Lastly, real quick, this is a forum that we do in advisory, your Bobcat Time. Bobcat Time is, again, where we work with students who might not be meeting our high standards, to make sure they're learning what we want them to learn. And the sheet I provided is just an example of, you know, we sit down with kids during advisory. I do this myself, I have my own advisory. Every student gets on a laptop, they go into Power School, see how they're doing, and if they're not meeting the high standards that we expect, they need to create a plan. And we do that weekly, so we don't want anyone slipping through the cracks.
Sounds like what my mom did at the kitchen table back in the day.
Yeah. Yep. Well, we do it weekly. So, I mean, it's something new, but, you know, it's very helpful. The kids get to, you know, know where they're at. And again, that's a benefit of having that Bobcat Time, and now that we have, you know, revived advisory at the middle school. Lastly, a couple... Oh, go on ahead, Denise.
I guess, just the one question I have.
Sure.
So there will be a parent form this month to collect feedback?
I've done that informally. After I send the survey questions out, my plan is to have like a night-type forum, where we invite parents in again, like we did last year.
Okay. And you'll let us know when that is, so that we have that option of attending if we wanted to hear that, you know, to be able to attend that?
Oh, of course, anyone will be invited. What I'd like to do is, once we send the survey questions out, we get that feedback from parents, kind of tailor the forum in terms of like what parents are looking to get answered.
Okay.
So that would be the goal.
Okay.
Just real quick, in terms of, you know, a couple posters that we placed in all classrooms, in terms of the map, in terms of what we're using, in terms of our competencies, that's the first one. And the second one is our habits of learning. That's getting produced as we speak. I do want to thank Darlene Smith. She's a parent that I've known for quite some time now. She has a daughter at the high school, she's a freshman, and a son who's a senior, but she's been helping me print these posters out, so she does a great job, very talented. And lastly, I won't go through it, just frequently asked questions, information that we have on our website for parents and students, et cetera. So...
Just one question. Wasn't there something about asking students, getting feedback from students as part of the agreement?
Yeah.
Is that on that timeline? I didn't see it.
That was something we kind of added, Tom, during that last meeting, but we definitely plan to do that. When we presented this timeline to all of you, that's something that came up, that we talked about, that we would also survey students during the year.
Okay, do you know when that'll happen?
First, we want to do parents, get their feedback, kind of go from there, but I promise we definitely will survey students this year, at least once. But I think a good start is to hear what the parents have to say first, if that's okay.
Sure. That sounds good.
Thanks, Jay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion items, the Siemens Plan. We have extensive information in our packets.
So if I could just review this. So there's so much information here, we tried to figure out a way to give it to you in a way that is meaningful and easy to follow. So I had Jim take the various options and put them at the top of the page, and then, if that was the option that was selected, what would happen to the capital plan over a number of years? So you didn't have to go back and forth, and you've seen all of them at various points in time, except for the one...
One C?
C, which is on the yellow sheet, or kind of yellow sheet, kind of an ugly yellow sheet.
Look at the colors.
Yeah. And so I think I would just have Jim, since you've had thorough presentation on all of these except for this one, just review one C, and then we'll be in a dialogue about where your collective minds are in terms of this proposal.
Thank you, Board. Good evening. Thank you for your continued look at this project, or these projects. So what changed on one option, one C, was we wanted to get to a term of seven years. As far as individual projects go, we were asked to see how we can segregate more, a little bit of the windows. So we did exactly that. We kept with just the front, and over at Massway, and removed the rest of the building windows around the back and courtyard. We did all of Moheramit, and we just removed the library glass and exterior doors, as it says in the bullet points below. So still, we're still waiting for those final numbers for the windows, and really, all these projects. And we should have those, but just wanted to keep in mind that this still is a not-to-exceed number. So I believe another question that was raised last week was, where would that then fall into the capital plan to complete those two schools and those two specific projects and windows? And that's exactly what we did. So every sheet is an updated capital plan based upon an option up above. I believe there was another question from the board as well about a percentage of payment to overall capital budget, and that's in that box on the right-hand side as well. What else has changed in here in a week's time is my last meeting with Siemens, trying to get a little bit more tighter numbers. The rebate increased, and the energy savings calculation increased as well. Not by much, but it gave a little bit more oomph to all the proposals.
It's a question I meant to ask the last time. When we talk about lighting, we've talked about purely in terms of energy, but isn't there kind of just a quality of lighting that's better, I mean, on your eyes? Because I think the fluorescent lighting is, I think that's what we had when I was in the school, and is, what we're getting is better than that?
Absolutely. It's not only the lighting fixture, but also the controls that go with it. So in the industry, it's a term called daylighting, so there would be a sensor attached to that room, say, a south-facing, so as sunlight enters the room, it automatically dims the light fixtures down. And every room would have a individual dimmer switch, instead of just a one bank on, one bank off. And what we've done so far in the different offices and schools, people really like that. Because the light doesn't know if it's cloudy or sunny out, so... And this will set us up in the future to integrate into our building management system, which will allow us to control lights remotely through a computer program. So if somebody drives by the school, "Hey, lights are on", we can turn them off, but also sensors as well. So as you're walking down the hallway, light fixtures would come on as they go, nobody's occupied, they automatically go off.
Not a question, just thank you very much for, again, I mean, going back, and I know I'm really glad to see like an option one C, because I know, you know, the others were a big concern in terms of the length of the lease, and I definitely appreciate, you know, having, being able to see what a seven-year term option would look like. So thank you very much for doing that.
So option one C, you wouldn't be doing, you'd be still kind of staging the windows a little bit in option one C, right?
Just only once. So we would do the core windows in this project, and then year two would be finishing up Moheramit all at one shot, and then in year four, we will look at finishing up all of Massway.
So first of all, thank you for breaking it down by percentage of your budget, but with that said, I mean, when I looked at the options, I mean, the first one that I really crossed off was option C, just because one thing I've learned in budgets with education is the incredible uncertainty we face coming down the road, and I just don't want to be faced with having to try to phase the windows in at a later date if something goes wrong. It just, I mean, to me, that seems like the non-negotiable one, so I really would like to do the windows in one fell swoop, because we're going to have to do them anyway, so let's do it. So when I look at the options, and of course, I'm kind of cheap and conservative, so I personally really like option one B. It takes care of the windows, it gets the lighting in. What I like about it, too, is that it takes up less than 20% of your total budget, so it gives you a maximum amount of flexibility in terms of budgeting going forward, but it's still, the things that we had to get done, get done. So I mean, in terms of me looking at it, that's what I really kind of have focused in on.
Jim, just looking at, you know, everything overall, I mean, a lot of this, obviously, is infrastructure that's badly needed. is infrastructure that's badly needed, and needs to be done. But then you get down to, you know, the car charging stations, which if someone's on a sustainability committee, being me, I would support that, but that, to me, doesn't seem like infrastructure as much as it seems like a kind of a luxury. Needs versus wants. This is more of a want. I mean, is that something that we're required to do in this plan?
Absolutely not. And we brought this up at our staff meeting, was the capital plan is always a living document, and we've changed it every year multiple times based upon the needs that are presented at that school year. It is obviously a good thing to do. It's definitely a want, it's not a need. And really, the capital plan is really a chess game, and it's some—some of these lower priority items are plugged into a year based upon financial ability to still stay within our capital allotment for that year. So, are they absolutely priorities? No. And—but it's still, as our industry is changing, and certainly our planet, I think to keep in step and tandem with making energy choices, I think it's pretty wise that we at least look at and explore. It's almost like with Mastway and some of the project offset for the main office, you know, there might be in three years like a grant out there that may pay for half of them, or 75%, and at those times, we may want to jump on it either sooner or later on in the capital plan.
Now, what's our—you know, obviously, a lot of this is managing cash flow, but what's our plan B in the event that something that we've pushed off goes, like a boiler goes, and that's a huge expense? Are we kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul? Are we just moving the money around to make sure that gets—big—I don't want to get to that point down the road where it's such a huge expense that we end up having to take it out of labor in order to pay.
I absolutely agree, and we spoke about this at last meetings, is the way we even do capital projects have changed, is we purposely withhold a couple of the projects through—to be done throughout the school year, or even encumber the money for the next year, just in case we have a breakdown of some sorts. I don't want to repeat of the middle school again. So, I mean, boilers specifically, they're all work—in working condition, we haven't maintained, they're cleaned. The only—I can't say only, but still, we're going to be running the risk at the middle school for, because some of that equipment is aged. However, I don't anticipate anything being over like a $50,000 repair. The only thing else there that maybe of significance is like an air handler. We've been down that road, and that came to about $25,000. So, as I look at the grand scope of the district, I don't see anything extremely major that may give a big enough hiccup to change our capital plan.
So, you're going to load up on bubble gum and Band-Aids to hold together the middle school for the time being?
It's already there. Scotch tape.
Remind me again why the building envelope was added to one C but not one B for the high school and Mastway?
Um, I—it came down to money in one C. We, again, can still change around those projects if we need to be. Sorry, I don't have a firm answer for you right off the top of my head. Yes, sir.
A couple of questions. One, in the one C, there's an item that I don't see in other ones, and it's in year two, the Mohairamit, the complete glass in library and exterior doors. So, that kind of appears de novo, so I had a question of that. And maybe, and kind of following up on Brian's question, just even going from, you know, the one A, which maybe is the Cadillac version, and in year two, I mean, there are things like at the high school, there's the boiler pump repair, and at the SAU, there's the heating and AC system replacement. And in other versions, those drop way down, they drop to year four. And is that relating to we're not going to get energy efficiency until year four rather than year two? Or are these systems that we feel might really be breaking down in year two, and even if we then don't do one A and we approve a one B or one C, we still might be faced with the daunting costs that have been deferred? So, I guess how those decisions were made, whether it's because equipment—we—you see it as having a limited shelf life, or it's more there's just a strategic advantage, environmental advantage?
Absolutely. Almost all—the majority of these projects do have an energy measure tied to them. So, as we do these projects, we are going to gain either rebates or minor energy savings through them. And when I look at facilities, I'm looking at how it's currently operating and what the end of life is. We are currently having some pumps and other pieces of equipment that are even beyond end-of-life, but they're still running and they're still operating well. Again, I try to—I try to do the best I can with the numbers, as there are some things that it may even be approaching end-of-life that we may just want to be getting out of the way, and try to tie to even other things in here at the same time, like a contractor, like mobilizing for one project instead of twice.
So, maybe leaving the Mohairamit thing beside, maybe another way to ask the question. Do you see things that we are kind of out on a limb because we're going to put them off from year two to year four or later? Are there things that—you think might really break down and we're going to have to deal with anyway?
Yes. And really, two projects that I see here that hit my attention immediately is the Mastway air handlers. Those are something that we've wanted to get done for quite some time. And what seems to be the bane of my—my existence here sometimes is fire panels, and the one at the service building is at end-of-life, and I just don't like dealing with the fire department all too often for emergency issues.
Those fire panels, crazy expensive.
Crazy expensive, and just some things, we just want to get it out of the way, even though it is maybe a work—fine.
So, the nuts and bolts of both yours and Michael's question, Kenny, is, given the project, and then the impact it has on the capital plan, Jim was basically shuffling projects by priority to the best of his ability. So, obviously, if you have, you know, the option that has everything, there's no prioritizing, everything gets done, but when you start sizing down the projects, then Jim has to reprioritize based on that particular project. And then throughout, I think we've been pretty consistent. The number issue is lighting and windows.
I'm sorry if I didn't answer the Mast—or the Mohairamit windows question completely.
These are very complex questions.
I know.
They're not like easy ones.
I just want to make sure I understand where the numbers are coming from here. So, for example, if we look at one A, the number at the top, the 4.9 million, that's the—essentially, the construction cost associated with those items?
Correct. That's the not-to-exceed number, the fee, and everything else.
So, then, when we look over to the right side there, to the payment side, it says year one, $620,000, nine oh three, years two to 10, 62903. That's—that's the lease payment?
That's the lease payment.
So, if we add those up, that's 6.2 million over 10 years?
Because I didn't—that—the interest isn't calculated in that, and at which we use 2.6%. So, the overall project is—for option one A is 4.92. You have to add 2.6% on that.
Okay.
That's for 10-year financing?
Correct.
The other part on the right is he's trying to show you the rebate, and then the one-time rebate, and then the energy savings over that time period for years two through 10, or whatever the term is that he's presenting.
The net payment.
Correct.
Correct.
In the event we—we do this, obviously, the four classrooms at the Mastway is top of the list. Is there enough time for this to get it done by school opening in the fall, or is that...
I wouldn't think so. I think we have to anticipate there's going to be some overlap into the school year, no matter how much, you know, contractors want to be done by the opening of school. I would use our bathrooms at Mastway as an example. We knew we had—we knew we were going to go into the school year by a month. It went into the school year by about six weeks. You know, it all depends on how soon we can start a project, and then, you know, how the weather holds up. Because when you're building an outdoor project, you are impacted by weather, and if you have a terrible wet summer, it's going to delay it. If everything goes rosy, then you—you know, you'll be maybe just a few weeks into the school year.
Back several years when we did the first pay-for-performance, I know a lot of interior lighting was revamped at that point as well, and that all happened second shift during the school year. So, but most of the lighting can be done during the school year second shift.
Would that be a problem if we have another decent increase in enrollment at Mastway next year without those three classrooms for six, eight weeks?
So, the—yeah, I mean, Carrie will stage her classrooms, you know, in various places to hold the fort for—a couple of weeks. The classrooms will be a priority over everything.
Right.
So, and we can—we have another conversation to have after Siemens to talk about other issues related—other funding that we may get related to Mastway, so.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I—I'm not sure where people are, everyone's like, you know, looking over this, but I—I think that one B is the best option. So, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we accept option one B for Siemens, which is a 10-year term for a total of, well, without the interest, of $3,790, $790,240.
Moved by Al. Is there a second? Seconded by Brian. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, discussion of the motion. Denise?
Yeah, I mean, I—you know, again, I would have liked to have seen the seven-year. I definitely could see some advantages, but I hear what you're saying, Al, in terms of getting all the windows done in one fell swoop. You know, you're right, because other things may come up, and then you can't get to them, and, you know, what you're saying in terms of what the payment will be, it's certainly down from what the original proposal was. So, yeah, I mean, I—I—while for me, it's—it's a little bit higher than I would have liked to see, it's definitely makes a lot—it—I can see where it definitely makes sense, so I can support it.
I just—I don't know the answer. Maybe, Al, with making the motion, just the public comment about, rather than making it part of our budget, instead separating it and making it a warrant article analogous to how we funded the field, just—you think about that at all? Does that have merit, or not?
I did. I mean, I—I look at, you know, of course, we have the luxury of doing on the town side as well, and on the town side, actually, anything that's less than a million dollars, we don't have to bond. And so, it's kind of a game that they play. So, technically, we approved $4 million in—in bonding, and the voters didn't vote on it because no individual item rose to a million dollars, and that probably is—happens in Lee, and happens in Madbury as well. To me, I look at this, and the way it's structured, it—we were going to have to do it. It's a—it's a really good deal. Interest rates are really low right now, and I just think it's a—you know, it's a defensible way that we can talk to the public, so I think—it—I just think it's the best option right now.
And I agree, but I'm just—we'd get the same interest rate if we went to warrant, if we proposed it as we're going to put this out kind of as a bond, you know, and...
If you put it out as a bond, you won't get the same interest rate. It'll be higher.
It will be. By how much?
About a full point. Almost a full point.
So, increase...
And the work wouldn't be guaranteed, you know, all of that, because you're going out to a bond, you're—you're assuming the risk in a bond. The bank is assuming the risk in a lease. So, really, when you look at it, what we're saying is that we would put the windows out, because the—and like from the town side, I mean, the lighting is awfully close to the million, but the—the thing that we've really done is the windows, which is two and a half million, we're doing it under the lease rather than going to the voters, which we'd have to on the town side. And again, I think it's—you know, which would probably lead us as we begin to think, okay, do we stage it? And I just think that this is a really good deal that we have. It allows us to take care of something that we can take off the table. It doesn't really stress our capital improvement plan, and it—you know, again, it's 19 and a half percent of the budget, so if we do hit difficulty later on, and unfortunately, the budget had to go, we—we would be able to handle it. So, I just think it's the best option in terms of getting things done at the best cost and giving us the most flexibility going forward. That's my two cents.
Other comments? Questions?
I guess I think a 10-year commitment, what we're signing up for, a million dollars, $985,000 in financing charges is more than I'm willing to vote for without going directly to the public. Too long, too much. I—I guess I—I'm more comfortable with more of a, like a four- or five-year, even if the—even if the first—even if the single-year payment is—is higher, to get some of these things done, and take advantage of a low interest rate, but—but going out 10 years is—I don't think I'm comfortable with that.
Dan?
Well, we discussed it briefly at the last meeting. Jim, if you could just go over it again. In terms of the purview of the Board to utilize the warrant in making the decision, outside of going with a bond, if we were to seek voter approval for the lease as presented via warrant, what would that process look like?
It would look a lot like a bond warrant, except we would do under the explanation that it's not a bond, it's a lease, and, you know, get voter approval for the lease. We don't have to go to—it's not an either-or, but I would need guidance from our attorney on how to put that warrant forward. If it's a lease warrant, it will only require 51%. If it's a bond warrant, it'll require 60.
And were that not to pass, where would that leave us?
It would leave us—the money to pay for the lease is already in Jim's budget, so basically, where it would put us is all the way back to pay-as-you-go.
Yep.
So, we haven't lost the money if the voters don't approve it. It just stages it out based on Jim's purple sheet, which is pay-as-you-go.
And then we would also lose the insurance piece of it, the guarantee piece. It would be—if I remember the answer to the question.
Not if we're asking the voters to approve the lease, that guaranteed work.
Well, just pursuing the—the—the voters have said no, we—we are left with pay-as-you-go.
Then we're—then Jim is doing the same routine that he does every year. He'd put out a certain amount of lighting for...
Right. He's managing the individual projects—
He becomes the manager.
—as opposed to Siemens being the general contractor.
That's right.
Okay.
And I don't know specifically what legal requirements there are in relation to asking the voters for permission to go forward with a lease versus—I know what they are for a bond, but I don't know exactly how to frame that in a lease format. It seems like it wouldn't be dissimilar to what the district did a long time ago, where they just made a litany of capital projects and asked the voters to approve them as you go through.
Is it something you think important we should know for a vote, and is it very crucial to vote on this therefore tonight, or is that information that might be helpful for us?
I think, you know, any time that there's a question about the legality of process, I think unfortunately, we should sit on it and let me get the answer, because I don't want to guide you in the wrong direction and then find that we can't even put it out to warrant because it's a lease, you know? I—I just don't know the answer to that, because I didn't anticipate the question, and I should have, you know, but I will definitely do that research and have it for you the 20th, and if that's information the Board wants, then I think... And if that's information the board wants, then I think, I hate to say this, but I think we need to wait until the 20th. And we can. I mean, again, we're not like in crisis mode. But when we hit the 20th, we'll be in crisis mode because we have to have this work done in order for us to put forward the warrants in a timely fashion. So if the board wants that answer, then we can't make a decision tonight.
You know, in general terms, I mean, you know, if it were possible to predict, I would be a lot more comfortable with the voter approval. I get worried about the complexity, presenting the complexity of this project and its advantages through a simple warrant. And, you know, we've talked about the limits of warrants before, most recently probably with football. And, you know, what does the result of that warrant really tell us based on the way it's shaped, it's worded, it's presented? You know, I don't know. Just sharing that general concern.
Denise?
Yeah, I personally, I don't think that would change my vote. While I can appreciate, you know, wanting to kind of have the voters have their say, I also anticipate, you know, you could have a situation deliberate session where they're like, well, let's cross it down to a million. And, you know, again, it's, I don't know. I feel like we get elected, you know, to make some tough decisions sometimes based on information and, you know, having multiple meetings and discussions and looking at different options and things like that. You know, again, I just, while I appreciate that it is a long time, the 10-year, I hear all the advantages to being able to take, to do this work now. And I don't think that that would change my vote. So I would be comfortable voting now on this and just going forward. But, I mean, obviously, if we don't have a majority that feels that way, then we'll go to a different, a different plan.
I think I would feel comfortable going forward with this because I think that essentially the windows have to be, that has to be done. And I think that, I think that some, you know, we represent the district, and I think the district, my sense of the district is the energy saving with the lights and to take advantage of the opportunities of this lease, you know, as soon as we can and gain those energy savings. And again, gain the, just improvement of the lights is such a powerful advantage that, and I think to go to a warrant, it is so, it took, I think, took us almost four meetings to kind of work our way through this. And I think just to put it out as a warrant, I think would be incredibly confusing. So I'm ready to vote. If somebody would want to make a motion.
We already have a motion. Al motioned and Brian seconded.
Just need to call the vote.
Okay. Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, all opposed. One opposed. The motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, carrying on our work, I'm going to ask Sue Caswell to come.
I think I'd like to take a break now.
Okay.
It's almost nine, okay?
Okay, sure.
If you take a five-minute break now, okay?
Small thing.
A small item.
Okay, so Sue Caswell, thank you for coming to the podium. We put together some materials for you related to your last question that we talked about was related to cutting the budget by $140,000. And I came with, came to you with a list of cuts that Sue and I put together that did not have the A-team's input yet, with the reservation that we would go back to them and they would have a chance to adjust the work that Sue and I did. And we did do that. And the administrative team did come with a new list.
Couple of things, not a lot.
They made some minor changes. And so the revenue sheet that Sue has put together, where I've made a big circle on it, so it's easy for you to find, it's this one. I said, how am I going to point that out? And I said, I'll just write a circle on it because it'll stand out. And so we gave you revised rates if we cut $140,000. And you can see those side by side with the original proposal and the adjusted proposal by $140,000. Administrative team still stands by the fact that we feel like we can, we can make that cut.
Great. Denise?
So can you talk a little bit about this possible grant?
Sure. Be glad to.
Sure.
So Sue is going to tell me before I tell you. There's asterisk next to this. We are now on the official list. So just to capture what I shared this morning with the Mastway staff, I gave them a sense of what this budget does for Mastway and the town of Lee. It's pretty amazing. So in the budget, we've, in the budget that was proposed, we have a million dollars set aside to add the four classrooms due to enrollment growth. And the action the board just took in relation to Siemens, we replace all of the lighting in that building and all of the windows, as well as all the lighting and all the windows at Moheramet and the lighting here at the high school. So that's two. The new piece we're adding tonight, really, we just learned about this week. And that is, due to the good work of Carrie Vase and Jim Rozicki, three years ago, they did a homeland security analysis of the Mastway school. And we have leveraged that now twice. Once, to put security cameras at Mastway and Moheramet, excuse me, just Mastway, Moheramet's not part of this. And now, because the state passed a bill this past session that set aside $19 million for schools who had E-rate plans or who had homeland security plans, we, Sue and Jim, took the work that Carrie and Jim did and submitted it as an actionable item under this new piece of legislation. And you can see that we now listed to receive 80 percent of the cost of doing the front entry. So the last time we talked about the front entry, we were talking about pushing it off into 18, 19, or even 19, 20. With this grant, we could be doing the grant, the front entry. So the grants were $572,000 of a $715,000 project, which is the front entry. Does not include the cafeteria, to be, just to be accurate. And it also is not formally funded yet. And that's what Sue wants to make sure I tell you. But I'm pretty confident, the way the state is working through this, that we are likely to be funded. And if that happens, as I was just saying to Brian, between the lighting, the additional classrooms, and the front entry, we'll have put about $2.5 million into the Mastway school in really one year, which we anticipated, you know, that happening over a three-year period. So highly likely, and I say highly likely because it's all Sue will let me say. But if that falls through, then all of these other projects surrounding are going to fall through, and I don't see that happening. So it's pretty exciting.
So how, can you explain how that fits then with the Siemens project that we just approved? And year one is the main office project offset for $140,000.
That's the $140,000 we need to match for that grant.
Okay, so that's where that is. Got it.
So Jim accounted for, that's why that year one is always about the classrooms and that offset, so that we have the matching money for this grant. So when's the last time Oyster River got 80 percent of anything from the state on any capital project? So this is like manna from heaven for an Oyster River because we're never at the top of the list for anything related to state because it's always based on, you know, the economic profile of a district. But because we had that homeland security grant analysis done, it placed us in a competitive place with the rest of the school systems in the state. So, you know, sometimes you do things and it seems like a big pain in the butt to do them. And then this particular effort has paid twice now to the district.
And when will we know for sure that we get the money?
Well, that's, that's the question.
First, they have to close the year. The state has to close the year and identify the actual amount. So they're saying about 19 million, but they don't have that actual figure. So at the end of the year, they close the year, close the books, and then they'll find if they have more money. They're quite sure they're going to have that much money, and then they'll start awarding it.
Their intention is, though, to award it within this fiscal year.
Right. It'll be by the end of June that we would receive that money, yes.
Okay.
So we'll know soon.
So pretty exciting. Very exciting.
Okay.
So that was the piece I wanted to share for later, Denise. Pulled it right out of me.
I'm sorry.
So for tonight, Sue has done the $140,000 cut, so you can see that. And we've given you the impact, and we've shown you the potential grant. And we also have given you a copy of where the administrative team sees the cuts. And it's really up to you guys at this point where you want to take us.
There's that yellow sheet item to consider.
Yep. And the yellow sheet on world language is the only position that was proposed. And that goes along with the presentation you heard from Leslie in UC tonight.
So the impact of the, in this proposal of the grant is that we basically take the entire CIP for next year.
And we dump it into Mastway.
Right.
Yep. And, you know, we've, we've never done 100 percent of our capital funds into one school before, but we've never had an opportunity like this before, Michael. And that really fits into Jim Rozicki's piece about the document being a living document. And it sort of goes back to when we added on to Moheramet, they had that one-time money, and we used it to expand the gym. And now we have this grant money, almost exactly the same amount of money as it happens. And we get to, you know, put it into Mastway. It just happens to be that we're already doing work at Mastway. So I talked to the staff about where you guys were with the budget. I had my coffee and conversation there this morning. And they were so excited to hear all the, all the ideas that the board was considering in relation to the next school year's budget and how it'll impact them. And they also recognized that any construction project, like adding onto the classroom or doing the front entry, is going to have an impact on them as those projects wind down in a school year. Carrie's going to have to set up her building, so the back of the building is the front entrance. And, you know, they'll do all of that. But the inconvenience is well worth the investment to get, you know, these kind of solutions into that schoolhouse. The windows and the front entrance on Mastway will completely transform the look of that building. It'll be so handsome when it's done. I think that the town of Lee will be very, very proud to have, they're already proud of Mastway as a school. But it'll, it'll really reflect the investment of two and a half million dollars. It'll be handsome when it's done.
So this budget is within our guidelines, right?
This is, with the $140,000, it fit your guidelines for the original goal, but with $140,000, this is a hard 3.25. There's no revenue being used to make it 3.25. It's an expenditure budget of 3.25.
It may even be a little bit less, too. Depending on, my estimate for negotiations was a little high on the bus driver's side. So it'll bring it a little less than 3.25.
So the 2019 proposed column on the first page includes the, that still includes the $140,000.
That still does, yes. The only thing I did on that page was just revise the rates. I left the toe. I left the total up there. I didn't take, because if I took that out, it would recalculate. I just added the new calculation over there.
So, I guess I have to ask a process question. What are we looking for tonight? Are we looking for a motion or are we looking for?
Motion. Tonight is a great night to make a motion, to put the budget to bed so that we can get to the warrant article, construction and have, and take it, quite frankly, I'd love to get it done tonight. We've done a lot of work together. We've reached the goal that the board wanted. I know that Denise talked about the, the camera issue being a concern to her on the cuts, but if, if the negotiated agreement comes through less like we think it will, then we'll just do the cameras all in one swoop, Denise. Because I knew that, that's a priority of mine as well, but it was a bigger item and it was an easy cut.
I get it.
So, we're pretty confident when Sue gets done with the negotiated agreements that we'll be able to cover the camera costs. So, if this budget is approved as presented, Michael, we're ready to go in terms of putting our warrants together and going into deliberative session.
So, is the budget we're proposing 45, 911, 555 or is it that minus 140? Is that in the blue area?
Oh, you need to take out the 140, yes.
Okay, so the, the motion would be to, somebody wants to just calculate that?
I have it somewhere. You got it, Sue? You should read it into the record, Sue.
Sure, I do have it, yes. 45, 7, 71, 555. Yep.
45, 7, 71, 555 with the $140,000 cut.
But let me, actually, let me go back because let's just talk about the general fund because that includes the warrants and the warrants that I've anticipated aren't actually what it's going to be. So, your general fund would be 44,199,061. That's the 140.
Do it again, Sue.
I'm going to just, just talking about the general fund budget is what we're talking about, so you don't want that number. You want the 44, 199,061 would be the new general fund number.
With the $140,000 removed.
Removed.
So, the motion would be to approve that as the proposed budget, Michael?
Could you say, well, I didn't get it all.
Forty-four million, 199,061.
Okay, so the motion would be to approve, approve that amount for, Al?
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the general fund in the amount of 44 million, 199,061.
Moved by Al, seconded by?
Al seconded.
Denise?
Just the question I would have would, if the grant doesn't come through, what, what would we do?
Then we follow Jim's capital plan and the front entrance comes in a successive year, doesn't, won't happen next year. So, it doesn't impact the general.
We're not committing to that.
Correct.
Well, the 140 is available for other capital projects.
Exactly.
So, I guess when I look at the, the cuts, the 140 of cuts, we have two 140 buckets, right? We've got the, the match for the grant and then we've got the?
Oh, yeah, they happen to be the same number.
Right.
We did say that, coincidence.
Some of those make sense. Some of them I feel like they are, they're estimates, but they're things that we don't really directly control. They're kind of, we, we think or we hope that some of these things like the natural gas expense, the transportation fuel, legal expenses, we're hoping that those come in below what we previously had in.
Right, we went back and we looked at what we actually spent last year or actually looked at three years of expenditures and then compared that to what we budgeted and we have budgeted this year and we're budgeting next year and really felt that in some of those cases, we probably over budgeted. We probably could scale back if we had to scale back on those, those we could, based on prior year's expenditures. That doesn't mean that, you're right, natural gas has been traditionally low over the last couple of years, but we just talked about.
Could it go soaring through?
Yeah. Right, and we talked about the fact that we've upgraded our system, so we hope to have better efficiencies, so it makes sense to do that. In terms of the buses, we're traveling less and gas is down too, but that could change, you're right, gas could, price of gas could go back up.
But we still left, I mean, Jim, Michael, what we did was we cut the size of the increase.
Yeah.
We cut it to this year.
Right, we just cut it back.
Is that true of the school supply line as well?
Yes, yeah, because I had increased the school supply line to $107 per student and I just backed it off to 100 and added to capture the 17,000.
Okay. I guess I, going back to Jim's comments about the, the, what was really important on his, in his mind in terms of other projects, he did mention the fire panel at the service building. That's a relatively small dollar item, $8,500 and I think it would be good to go ahead and bring that into this year's budget. So, I'll make a motion to amend the cut.
Is Jim here?
To increase the general fund to 44 million, 207,561.
So that the alarm at the SAU can be replaced.
I thought it was the?
Maintenance building.
Maintenance, yeah. Fire alarm, fire panel.
You could capture that in the savings on the negotiated agreement.
Oh, that's true. We might not have to make that change, Michael. We need to talk about the, the negotiated agreement with the bus drivers.
But that's not part of the general fund?
Yeah.
It will be eventually.
It'll be a separate warrant.
It'll be a separate warrant.
Added into.
Okay, I'm, I'm new at this. I don't understand the process. I'd like to see us do the fire alarm.
Yeah, okay. I think what Sue is saying is we can capture it within the current budget as proposed.
Okay.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
So, we're still at 44 million, 199, 61.
61.
So, it was never seconded anyway?
Yeah, it was.
Was it?
Al and Denise.
No, I didn't.
I didn't. No, I don't think, I don't think.
The original one was.
The original one.
I don't think Michael's never.
44, 199, 61.
I withdraw my amendment.
Oh, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You're right about the original motion. Al made the motion, I seconded.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about that, I was talking about, Michael's.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're back to 44 million, 199,061, okay? It's moved and seconded, is there further discussion on it?
Just one other question. When, when do we, I forget too, when do we talk about the language parts?
Right, just like Michael did with the alarm, you should talk about it right now if there's any consideration to adding that to the budget.
Because that is not.
Oh, can I, can I?
Sorry.
So, in the past, I know sometimes we have waited on a yellow sheet until we've gotten like the firm numbers on health or retirement and I, so my preference at this time would be to wait and see maybe what happens with that. That, that would be my preference.
That would be mine as well.
I, I guess my, my thought is we really made the move into expanding language opportunities and this is where we now have arrived because we did enrich our program, enhance our program and I feel in a way we're putting a stop to what we've grown and what there's really been a lot of interest for. So, I'm, I'm in favor of adding that position. I think when we had our board discussions, a lot of it was we wanted to see what happened. We wanted to see, did this program grow? Was there an interest? Did it blossom? And it's clear that it is and without that position, I think we're dead-ending something that we started. So, I, I feel it's a very important position and I, and certainly if, there's room at the end, it could be brought in, but I don't, I wouldn't want to take that chance. I'd like to be upfront and get it in.
I guess I have questions about how that position, you know, just how the time is going to be used with that position, you know, in terms of what are you taking away from to put that fifth grade in? And I think we haven't had, before I'd even want to go there, I would want to find out how that works because it seems to me like we've shortened, shortened periods in the middle school already and is that what's going to happen to the middle school schedule, the fifth grade schedule if you do add that? I mean, there's a good argument to add it, but I mean, there's, there's a, there's a cost to that too. So, I think there's a bunch of discussions we have to have.
Does Todd know the answer to that or do we need Jay here?
I can certain, I can certainly speculate. Jay has not begun to build next year's schedule, so it's hard for me to say absolutely what would happen. My presumption would be that a similar model that's being done at the sixth grade would be applied to the fifth grade, so it would, it would be plugged in as a 30-minute-a-day class five days a week and yes, it would mean shaving a few minutes here and there off each class to get that extra 30 minutes out. It has been very successful at the sixth grade level.
Okay.
Well, I, I understand like the want to add the fifth grade language, but I, I mean, again, I'm looking at the tax impact of this budget, particularly to Madbury and it, you know, I'm thinking about standing at the deliberative session up there and selling this and that even cutting $140,000 out of this, moving down to what is, I mean, a higher threshold than our goal even was, it's still $1.31 per thousand for Madbury, which is a punishing increase. And I just, I think that we've added a lot of things to the district over the past couple of years and I think, you know, this budget is really well put together. We've done a lot on the capital side, but I just, I just don't see adding position when I'm looking at those numbers right now. I think it's, you know, while we have improved the language program, I think this is a pause year. We just don't have the money, in my mind.
Sue, further comment? Are we ready to vote? Okay.
So, can I just ask for, so we're voting on the budget as presented and a motion has not been made to add, to approve the yellow sheet, correct?
So, the motion on the, the table would be to approve 44 million, 199,061 for the general fund.
Okay. Do we vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Motion passes.
Thank you. So, we presented the draft warrants. Did you want to go through those one more time, Sue? They're pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. I'm, I guess we could bring them back next time with the actual numbers. We should have them.
Because you have the negotiated numbers, yeah.
Yeah, we anticipate we'll have the negotiated agreement from the other unit for the next meeting, correct?
Correct. So, we'll have the, the warrants for their consideration with the numbers inserted on the 20th.
Yes, unless there's any other questions or anything else. No, we're good, okay?
School calendar?
So, first read, first calendar. We have coordinated this work with Dover and Somersworth where our children attend Vogue School and the calendars also includes Barrington, so the three systems that we have direct contact with, this con, this calendar is very, very similar. There are a couple of places where they depart, but it's just simply a circumstance of local, local issues. For the most part, these calendars are really tightly aligned. So, you don't have to take action tonight, it's there for you to look at, nor on, it'll come back in two weeks for, for your vote.
So, I have one question.
Denise?
So, the whole kindergarten nurse, they're going to start with everybody else, it looks like, because it says first day for all students?
And that's what you asked us to do this year.
Right, yep, yep, okay. Now, I just double check that.
Okay, other questions for now? Okay, so we'll see it in two weeks. So, do you approve it in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, we do have a vote on the new bus drivers' contract. They passed their, their side of it 19 to 5, which we think is incredibly impressive. That's almost, you know, that's, I just think it's really wonderful. It's been a very long process with the drivers because they affiliated with the International Union of Equipment Operators and so unlike contracts we've negotiated in the past, we had to go right from Article 1 all the way to the end. We had some very specific things that we wanted to accomplish on management side related to making these positions attractive. We had really great conversations with the new union related to that and so what we'd like to do is take a non-public, just to kind of go through that, answer your questions and come out in public and restate those issues and, and take a public vote. So, we need to discuss, give you an opportunity to discuss it non-public first.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into non-public? So?
Do you want us to do it right now or go through?
Because we're going to go back and go into non-public.
Like the list, list of policies and all of that, or should we just?
Yeah, let's wait, let's do the policies first. Let's do the public stuff first and then we can go into non-public on the two issues that we have.
Because we have list of policies at the bottom.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, just let me get that page. Okay, so we have four policies for second, second read. I don't know if people want to pull these out. We've looked at these a number of times, so, or whether we can approve them as a block. So, what's your pleasure, Denise?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve them as a block. ACE, policy AC, nondiscrimination, JICK, bullying and cyberbullying, JLCE, emergency care and first aid, GBCD, background investigation and criminal records check.
Okay, moved by Denise, is her second? Seconded by Dan. Okay. Discussion on these?
I think there's just one minor clerical correction at the bottom, near the bottom of the first page of AC, which is the nondiscrimination and equal opportunity policy in the paragraph that was added. The next to last line that was added there says have violated it policies as well as providing and so on and I think it should just be its.
Its, yeah. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, other changes, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. These policies are approved for second read, proved as a second, second read. Okay, school board committee updates? Al?
So, I filled in on wellness. I was, it was my first meeting. Maria was actually the wellness representative and I took over her place, so they met and there were a couple of topics that were brought up. The first was cell phones, which actually kind of blends in, interestingly enough, I just had a student from Mouth of the River asking me a bunch of questions about cell phones. So, what I said, and the wellness was a bunch of nurses and one faculty member was there and so they began to discuss cell phones at the middle school, cell phones at the high school. And so I, to the Mouth of the River person, the question that stood, stood out to me was pretty funny, do I think cell phones are distracting? To which I made a confession, I said, "I have actually checked the Red Sox scores at the game or on the game when I'm sitting here." So, yes, they are distracting, but I, I said, to me, when I'm thinking about, I know we've charged the policy committee to look at it, but everything that Jim has talked about is how we do things systemically and it's like when I look at students, students are going to, students are going to have to learn to use technology and they're going to have to learn to use it appropriately. And, I mean, I almost hit a UNH student crossing the street today, so it, it really is a skill set that we're trying to teach our students and it's like the majority of Oyster River students are going to go to college, they're going to go away from home, they're going to have a cell phone and it's, so our task really is to try to teach them to use them appropriately as tools. And so, I think, you know, as we go forward, it really is talking to teachers, talking to students, coming up with a coherent way that that's our strategy to attack this. And I came back again and I said it when the parents were there, it's going to have to be a cooperative process that works with parents and students. So, that was my first thing. The second was, topic that came up was the start time and of course, they have come up with like a sleep survey and that was a big thing that we did, but I, what I thought is I, I don't want us to just get stuck solely on the sleep survey and that is like, before the chime, chime change, everybody got whatever, six hours and 25 minutes and after we got six hours and 35 minutes or something like that. I don't think that accurately reflects what's going on, at least in my mind, what I've seen is a shift in the mornings of how you approach it. It's less hectic. That doesn't quantify in the sleep study, but it does affect how kids approach the day. So, again, it's another one of those things that I'm sure we can't get to it till the spring, but it would be interesting to see, throw out all the changes or things that have come up with this. I mean, I guess what we're really or things that have come up with this. I mean, I guess what we're really trying to do is we're trying to tweak it and make it better. So we're looking at, everything is fair game in the discussion, and how can we improve it? And so that's how we're going to approach the sleep study, and that's what I said to them. And then the third thing I thought was the most disturbing, and that is vaping, which is apparently, and I'm really not up on vaping at all, I got to be honest, but the new things are like really small. It's kind of like a, like a, almost a thumb drive. And it's, it's, and Suzanne, when I talked to her, it's not just Oyster, it's exploded.
Right.
Amongst the high school population, and we're just a reflection of the explosion that's going on. It's an amazing marketing opportunity that they did. Unfortunately, it's reintroducing nicotine back to students. And I think Suzanne said there have been 13 suspensions already this year due to vaping. So I think it would be, and she's sent out in her newsletter multiple things about this, but it would be, I think that's something we want to put on the docket down the road and have a discussion.
I would, I, Suzanne, Suzanne presented all of this to the administrative team on Monday, Tuesday. And the devices are mind-boggling. I don't know if you have been exposed to them, but you know, the traditional bong and all that kind of foolishness, that's history. These things look like thumb drives. They look like antennas to their computers. So you know, we said it, and it's activated by using the thumb drive port. So I, I asked Suzanne to come to the policy committee and talk about the, the policy. Vaping is a violation of policy. On the tobacco side, we want to include it on the drug side, because the, the oils that they bring can be nicotine, or they can be marijuana-based. And so we need to get it on both sides of the equation.
So we need like the last of the last is, so the, the wellness committee is kind of, at least what I saw was split. They had the mental health group has been meeting, and this was the other wellness part. And so their goal was actually staff wellness is what they were working on. So I think, you know, of course, the comment came up that they would like the board to actually meet with the staff periodically. And I, I keep thinking of Jim's coffee and conversation. And I think it would be a good idea to, to have, allow us to go to each of the schools. I think the details really I'm trying to work on, and that's something to work with you, is how do we do it, working with, that it's not an adversarial thing between staff and administration and us. It's really hearing their concerns. And I, I don't want to be Dr. Phil. I really want it to be kind of structured so that we, you know, get something out, or that we can do something actionable about it. So I, if we could put something like that, I mean, I'm just throwing that again. I hate to keep piling on the spring. But if in the spring we had the opportunity to go do that, and we can come up with a workable way, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a really good opportunity for us.
Are there committee updates? Okay, public comment?
That's what I thought.
Two more public than administrative.
I'm Dean Rubin. I wanted to just make a remark about the middle school report card they standards base, which is, I printed out my son's, and it's, when you print it, it's about five pages long, and it has, I don't know, 10 or 20 pieces of information on it that are basically single letters. So the whole thing could be a lot shorter. And really, the good stuff, the comments, don't print when you print it. You have to click them individually, and they kind of pop up, and you can read them. But, so I'm hoping all that could be better. And I'm thinking the, probably the most useful thing would be, I guess I don't know what a good report card looks like, and what a bad report card looks like. And so maybe if, if they could generate some examples of what we might see, and what might be concerning, and what might be good, that might help us, parents who are, I mean, I'm at C. I don't know about anybody else.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Just want to expand on what I said earlier about the lighting in the windows. With the lighting, not only do you get a rebate, but you also get savings every year. If you don't do it, all of your lighting right away, you're just going to throw that savings away for that year. Price of the project will go up as time goes on. And, but also, the savings goes up. So the sooner you capture the savings, the better. And when you've got a rebate, grab it and go. As far as the windows go, yes, I would do all of them. If you're contemplating both schools, do all of them. And in talking to your engineer, apparently the facade attendant to replacing the windows has serious problems, like virtually no insulation. So you want to put in what's called a thermal decouple as you're doing the windows and the facade around the windows. Apparently, there's aluminum paneling above and below, and not much else. I, I didn't get the full story. But I certainly am, was, was extremely critical of what Durham did when Todd told the town it was going to be $1.3 million to do the town hall, and we get that from selling the old one, and the job went to 4.2. That's lying, folks. You aren't doing that. You're being as careful as you can. And the idea that you people, that the amount of time you've taken on this project, you expect the voters to take, you're right, Denise. You're, you're appointed to take some decisions. And I don't expect the voters to go into the detail that you've gone into on this subject. And that's a, that's a stretch. We've, and you people are asking the hard questions and doing the hard work on this. And I, I just want to say, go all in on both the windows and the, and the lights, and don't quibble around. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. Future meetings, I just want to make one suggestion. Denise and I, when we were like looking at when we're going to address the issue of homework, you know, and stress, and which is something Kenny, a few meetings ago, this is kind of, when is this going to get on the agenda? We, we thought for a while that we could put it on the December 20th, and have it as part of the meeting. But I'm convinced now that if we're going to do it, we need to set up a special workshop, if we're going to, you know, touch it, we're going to have to set up a special workshop where that's the issue, where, and where we may do something, I think, interesting, like bring in some students, bring in, you know, whether we, you know, how we're going to structure it, but have that be the focus. So I think what I'd like to see is maybe Wendy get in touch with us. And obviously, it has to be after, I think, after January, but, you know, because it, you know, I think as the budget gets done, I think it kind of frees up some space. So I think what I'd like to do is just have her contact people, because I mean, it is a board goal, and we haven't really, we've had glancing discussions about it. We've gone into some classes, but I think to really have, have time where we're devoted to that. So I think that's going to be, Wendy will be contacting you about something, about that. Okay. Okay, you have the list of meetings. So I think we need to have a motion to go into non-public session. Which should we do first? The negotiations?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be going in and then coming out, going back in. Is that the way it'll work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So probably going to the door and opening the door, and then, okay. So can we have a motion to go into non-public for the purpose of discussing negotiations? Which, which number would that be?
I know, I'm trying to figure out which number it is.
It's, it's on the.
He hasn't listed.
Oh, he hasn't, it's right listed?
Yeah, on the, on the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, okay. All right. So I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to enter non-public for the purpose of strategies with respect to collective bargaining, RSA 91-A colon 2. Suzanne, I, parentheses, A.
Okay.
I'm reading it right.
Yeah. Okay, moved by Denise. Is her second? Seconded by Dan. Roll call?
Dan Klein, yes. Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny Rottenberg, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Oh, Al Holland, yes.
Francis Narros, yes.
Okay. Nine forty?
Todd, can you make sure the conference room's open?